Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the April seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three Crest Hill City Council Meeting to Order at seven P. M. I would ask that everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag, and I would ask that you please remain standing after the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The month of May has a lot of special meanings to it, and one of them is Police Officers' Month. Unfortunately, the city of Crest Hill, in our sixty-three-year history, lost two police officers killed in the line of duty. So we certainly never want to forget them and the sacrifices that they made. Our first officer was Officer James W. Nink, who was killed in the line of duty on September sixteenth, nineteen sixty-seven. He was killed in a vehicle accident as he was in pursuit of an armed robbery suspect. And on September twenty-eighth, nineteen ninety-four, Sergeant Timothy Simonsen was gunned down and killed in the investigation of an armed robbery burglary also. So we certainly want to extend our condolences to the widow of Officer Nink, Betty Nink Duval, and to the widow of Sergeant Tim Simonsen, Sue Simonsen. Both of their families, their children, they're all grown now. We certainly want to keep them in our prayers. We want to thank them for the sacrifices they made for the city of Crest Hill to make this a better community than what we had. So I would ask for a moment of silence, not only for Officer Nink and Sergeant Simonsen, but for all police officers, all first responders, firemen, hospital personnel, everybody that is a first responder. Keep them in your prayers, keep them safe, because they're the ones that protect us every day and night. They're the ones that run in while we run out. So let us have a moment of silence and a moment of prayer for all of this. Roll call, please, Karen.
Scott Dyke?
Here.
John Rushe?
Here.
Darrell Jefferson?
Here.
Claudia Guzal?
Here.
Ray Solomon?
Here.
Tina Oberlin?
Present.
Mark Zepity?
Here.
Nate Albert?
Here.
Joe Kuba?
Here.
Okay, first on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the City Council Meeting held on April third, two thousand twenty-three. Motion would be in order.
I make a motion, but there's a correction for do I need to make a motion? Do I need to make the correction?
Motion with the correction, please.
The second page, fifty-four, item one, says team captain, Julia Gonzalez is Flora Gonzalez with an S and not Victoria.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Alderwoman Guzal with the corrections and seconded by Alderman Jefferson. Questions or comments of the motion? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rushe?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Guzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Zepity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And you also have before you the minutes of the work session held on April tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Motion would be in order for approval.
So moved.
We have a motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Albert for the approval of the work session minutes held on April tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Rushe?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Guzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Zepity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, we have several guests in the audience this evening, and with this being the month of May, and we just took a moment of silence for our police officers, the city of Crest Hill most recently has Monday swore in two new police officers, number thirty-three and number thirty-four, the most in the city of Crest Hill's history. And they are here with us this evening, so I will turn it over to our police chief, Ed Clark, for introductions of our two new police officers.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Very happy, proud day. We did swear in our thirty-third and thirty-fourth officer in the department. I'll introduce to you Officer Andrew Black and Officer Andrew Gorski.
Good evening.
Come on up, gentlemen. Both these gentlemen come from fine families. They're very happy to be here, excited, young, you know, still very ready to go. Both are military, have a military experience and background, and I think they're going to serve the city very well throughout their career. So I'll introduce them, and if they could just say a couple words about themselves.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andrew Black. I grew up right in Joliet, probably eight minutes from here my entire life, so very excited to get to know each and one of you and just be a member of the city.
Thank you. Welcome.
Well, I'm Andrew Gorski. Nice to meet you all, and I just wanted to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to say thank you.
And to both Andrew Gorski and Andrew Black, I'm going to say what I told you on Monday, that you represent the city of Crest Hill on every call that you go on, no matter how minor or how serious you think it is. So I would ask you to treat everybody with respect and handle the situation appropriately. I would also suggest that you take the advice of our older officers, who have a lot of knowledge here in dealing with incidences on the streets, and take advantage of the training that we give, and have a safe and a long career with the city of Crest Hill. So welcome on behalf of the city. I will open it up from City Council for any comments.
Well, gentlemen, we're pleased to have you join our force here. I hope to see more of you, and good luck and stay safe.
Right.
Welcome to the city of Crest Hill. I know who's thirty-three and who's thirty-four. They introduce you as Officer thirty-three and thirty-four.
It's Andrew.
Thirty-three and thirty-four?
Andrew.
Andrew. Welcome to the city of Crest Hill. I wish you many blessings and protection, and hopefully you'll do well here, I'm pretty sure.
Congratulations, and hope you spend twenty-five years here.
Welcome to the city. Glad to have you onboard, and I'm sure it'll take and help you guys along, along with the rest of the staff. Hope you have a long and safe career here with us. Take care. Thank you.
I'd like to say welcome, and hopefully you have a long and distinguished career here, and as our city grow, you will grow. I think you have some great mentors to learn from here, and I wish you the best.
Well, welcome to the city of Crest Hill. Congratulations. It's an exciting time. You'll be going over to the new building shortly, and it'll be a great place to start your career, and I wish you many, many years of safe service with the city of Crest Hill. Thank you.
Welcome aboard, gentlemen. Look forward to working with you.
Welcome, fellas. Best of luck to you.
Great, thank you, gentlemen. Have a good night. Okay, the month of May is also Motorcycle Awareness Month. We have with us in the audience, we have David Pink Floyd and Jenny and your-
Adrienne Ackelman.
Adriana. So welcome to the city of Crest Hill. We do have a proclamation that we would like to read and pass first, and then we will make a presentation to you. So we'll begin with the reading of the proclamation this evening with Alderman Kubal.
The city of Crest Hill, Illinois, proclamation by the mayor, whereas safety is the highest priority for the highways and streets of our city and state.
And whereas the great state of Illinois is proud to be a national leader in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness. And whereas motorcycles are primary, are primary common and economic means of transportation that reduces fuel consumption and road wear and contributes in a significant way to the relief of traffic and parking congestion. And-
Whereas it is especially meaningful that the citizens of our city and state be aware of motorcycles on the roadways and recognize the importance of motorcycle safety. And-
Whereas the members of ABATE of Illinois, a brotherhood aimed toward education, continually promote motorcycle safety, education, and awareness in high school drivers' education programs, and to the general public in our city and state, presenting motorcycle awareness programs to over a hundred and twenty thousand participants in Illinois over the past eight years. And-
Whereas all motorcyclists should join ABATE for Illinois Inc. in actively promoting the safe operation of motorcyclists, as well as promoting motorcycle safety, education, awareness, and respect of the citizens of our city and state. And-
Whereas the motorcyclists of Illinois have contributed extensive volunteerism and money to national and community charitable organizations for the enhancement and support of these organizations. And-
Whereas during the month of May, all roadways users should use, unite in a safe sharing of highways within the city of Crest Hill and throughout the great state of Illinois. Now therefore, I, Raymond R. Solomon, Mayor of the city of Crest Hill, in the great state of Illinois, in recognition of the thirty-sixth anniversary of the efforts of the A B A T E of Illinois Incorporated, and the over three hundred fifty-two thousand, three hundred eighteen registered motorcyclists statewide, and in recognition of the continued role of Illinois serves as the leader in motorcycle safety, education, and awareness.
To hereby proclaim the month of May this year, two thousand twenty-three, as Motorcycle Awareness Month, in the city of Crest Hill, and urge all motorists to join in an effort to improve safety and awareness on our roadways, and witness thereof, whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the great seal of the city of Crest Hill to be affixed this seventeenth day of May, April, in the year two thousand twenty-three, Raymond R. Solomon, Mayor.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
Right, motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Kubal. Questions or comments, comments of the motion for the proclamation? Roll call, please.
Mark Zepity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rushe?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Guzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, I'd like to introduce David Pink Floyd. What a great name. I think a dark side of him here, maybe. We certainly want to welcome you. We've done this for many years. We skipped the last few with COVID and everything else, but we certainly, you know, we want to make sure that everybody is aware of the motorcycles that are on the street. There's a lot of motorcycles on the street, not only in the month of May, but throughout the entire summer and during the nice weather days. So be cognizant of them and, you know, look both ways before you pull out, because sometimes they're difficult to see, and there's not a lot of protection for them. So we certainly want to keep everybody safe. We want to keep all the residents in Crest Hill safe and all our visitors that pass through. So it is my honor and privilege as the mayor of the city of Crest Hill, David, to present a copy of the proclamation that was just read for you and all the motorcyclists throughout the great state of Illinois. So have a great summer, be safe, and we're glad to share.
Thank you.
There you go, just a couple copies, right? Anything you'd like to say? Go ahead.
Just as he said, may his motorcycle last month. Look twice, save a life. That's the way the line works. That's pretty much all I've got to say.
Say anything?
Nope. Unless you have questions for us.
We do have both men and women riders in our group. We've been established in Will County since two thousand and three, so this is our twentieth anniversary. We used to meet at the Harwood Post until it was destroyed and torn down, so we've been doing the VFW down in, on Leroe and Fifty-Three, Stone City.
Stone City.
And I know you guys make a lot of donations to a lot of needy organizations also.
Yeah, well, the people in our group do. Pretty much our organization just goes for motorcycle safety and awareness and stuff like that. We do go, as you mentioned, to the schools, go to driver's ed classes and teach sixteen-year-old kids to watch for motorcycles, and teach them why we do the things we do, because, you know, it does make a difference that they start to realize why a motorcycle's riding on the left side of the lane as opposed to just riding in the middle of the lane where they think they should be, and things like that, so. We do try to make people aware of us.
Great.
We're not all bad people.
City council, I think I know you're a wonderful person. You don't have to tell me that. You and Jen Jen are awesome, and I just met you, but I'm sure you're awesome too, because they're awesome. So thank you for doing that, and don't forget to give me my sign.
Yeah.
Jen Jen, please give me a sign.
I have a sign.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. That is a good awareness, because last year, a dear friend, she's paralyzed because of the accident, and it's not just the drivers, also motorcyclists, sometime they drive like crazy. So that particular incident was both, it was a young girl pulling, that she just started driving, but the motorcycle wasn't speed, and unfortunately, my friend, she was in hospital for nine months, paralyzed right now. So it's just, it is so-
Yes, and there are a lot of motorcyclists that give us bad names for the way they ride.
It's too bad, yes, it's too bad, but thank you for doing this.
When they do, they usually start to straighten up.
Congratulations, and congratulations on where you teach young people right properly. That's the main thing, getting them young, teaching them how to do it. Congratulations on that.
So it wasn't done, but it's good to keep this awareness going, you know, not just this month, every day.
Right. We do have yard signs that Tina was asking about. Stay, start seeing motorcycles, and we put them out in yards. You'll see them as you're driving around. A lot of them say Will County ABATE on them. That's from us. We also do them from the state, and there's a lot of them. You come from IDOT.
Back in the day, we used to have a banner here.
There was a banner that used to come from IDOT. I know you guys, yes, used to have one in France at times, but I believe it got destroyed somewhere in bad weather, and the funds just weren't there to replace it, so.
Well, thank you, I thought you did.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Okay, moving back to the agenda, our city attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I do not have any other items.
Any questions of city attorney? All right, thanks, Mike. City Administrator Jim Marino, good evening, Jim.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have one item before you. In your pocket, you have a lease agreement with Lockport Township Park District. The terms of the lease were discussed with you at the last work session. This is for office space that the Park District will have in the new City Hall. The main points of the lease are an annual rent of one dollar per year. The Park District will have no less than two days per week of the office being open and attended for residents. Utilities for the Park District, the Park District is going to cover their own internet and phone service, and the term of the lease is ten years. So unless you have any questions, the lease agreement between the city of Crest Hill and Lockport Township Park District is ready for your approval. The Park District Board will consider this on their meeting on the twenty-fourth.
And I presume you went over everything with the fine to its calling?
The change that the request that has been made was sent to the Park District Attorney. She approved it and is taking it to her notice on the twenty-fourth.
Thank you. So moved, just presented.
Second. Motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Albert for approval of the execution of a lease agreement between the city of Crest Hill and the Lockport Township Park District. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Guzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Zepity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rushe?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Any questions of city administrator? All right, thanks, Jim. Moving on to Public Works Department, our Assistant Director of Public Works, Blaine Klein. Good evening, Blaine.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Four items for you tonight. First item relates to the East Plant construction, seeking approval of pay request number nine from Williams Brothers, Williams Brother Construction Incorporated with direction to send it to the I E P A for approval and dispersment for a total of one hundred ninety-three thousand, three hundred forty-six dollars and ninety-one cents.
So moved, just presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Kubal for the approval of pay request number nine from Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated with direction to send it to the I E P A for approval and dispersment for a total of one hundred ninety-three thousand, three hundred forty-six dollars and ninety-one cents. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rushe?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Guzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Zepity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Second item relating to the West Plant construction, approval and pay request number three from Vissering Construction Incorporated with direction to send it to the I E P A for approval and dispersment. The total amount is three hundred eighty thousand, nineteen dollars and ninety-seven cents.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Alderwoman Kubal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for approval of pay request number three from Vissering Construction Incorporated with direction to send it to the I E P A for approval and dispersment for a total of three hundred eighty thousand, nineteen dollars and ninety-seven cents.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Alderwoman Kubal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for approval of pay request number three from Vissering Construction Incorporated with direction to send it to the I E P A for approval and dispersment for a total of three hundred eighty thousand, nineteen dollars and ninety-seven cents. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Zepity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rushe?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Guzal?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Third item relates to the vehicle purchase of the three vehicles, two of them from Ron Terrell Ford and one from Currie Ford. The amounts reflected on the agenda there are slightly off, so the amended numbers include title license fees like that, those funds, or those dollars that are charged that weren't included. So the total purchase from Ron Terrell Ford of one hundred six thousand, nine hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty-two cents, and from Currie Ford for thirty-one thousand, seven hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-four cents. So we're seeking approval for the purchase of the three vehicles, the two from Ron Terrell Ford and one from Currie Ford. The total amount is one hundred thirty-eight thousand, two hundred fifty dollars and fifty-two cents for all three.
So moved, just presented.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Albert for the approval of purchase of three vehicles, two from Ron Terrell Ford and one from Currie Ford, in the amount of one hundred thirty-eight thousand, two hundred fifty dollars and fifty-two cents. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Guzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Zepity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rushe?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And the last item, to approve a resolution for an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Crest Hill and the village of Romeoville for the illuminated street sign at Pinnacle Drive and Renwick Road. Well, that would be for the insert-
So moved, just presented.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Albert for the approval of a resolution for an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and the village of Romeoville, Will County, Illinois, for an illuminated street sign at Pinnacle Drive and Renwick Road. Questions or comments?
Did we find out about the second light as well? There's another one?
My understanding it was just this one or not.
But Mark was supposed to get back to us. Does he have any notes for that?
I did not have any notes. I'm in the second area.
Only that one's not illuminated, though.
Okay.
It's just a fixed, a fixed sign.
Okay, thank you.
All right, roll call, please, Karen.
Mark Zepity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rushe?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Guzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Zepity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rushe?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Guzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Zepity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rushe?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next item I have on the agenda is to award the contract to Harvin Claws Sign Company for the city center driveway sign and weight finding sign project in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars.
So moved.
I think I missed the number. There you go.
No, fifty-nine, six fifty.
Your memo says fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine, nine, sixty-five.
Or fifty-nine, thousand, six hundred and fifty.
Our says fifty-nine, nine, sixty-five.
Sorry?
I'll take the lower one, though.
You said fifty-ten.
Well, there's two different numbers. If you look at the first page, there's, there's two different numbers. There's fifty-nine, six fifty, and there's fifty-nine, six five.
I'm just checking out the bid tab. It's fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Okay, that's over here.
So there's. Sorry about that.
Okay, you have a motion?
I do. Claudia.
I'm Claudia, and I can-
You do, right, Karen? You have a motion and second?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Alderwoman Kubal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson, for the awarding of the contract to Harvin Claws for the city center driveway signs and weight finding signs in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars.
So moved.
We have a motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Albert, to award the contract to Chicago Sign Group LLC for the city welcome signs fabrication and installation in the amount of one hundred ninety thousand dollars. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Guzal?
Yes.
Mark Zepity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next item is looking for a motion to approve the execution of a cost-sharing agreement between the city of Crest Hill and the Hillcrest Shopping Center LLC by resolution and satisfaction of one of the conditions of ordinance nineteen thirty passed in October of two thousand and twenty-two for the water main location, relocation.
Questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rushe?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Guzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Zepity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next item, looking for a motion to award the contract to Chicago Sign Group LLC for the city welcome sign fabrication and installation project in the amount of one hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Albert, to award the contract to Chicago Sign Group LLC for the city welcome signs fabrication and installation in the amount of one hundred ninety thousand dollars. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Guzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Zepity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rushe?
Yes.
Motion carried.
The next item is looking for a motion to approve the execution of a cost-sharing agreement between the city of Crest Hill and the Hillcrest Shopping Center LLC by resolution and satisfaction of one of the conditions of ordinance nineteen thirty passed in October of two thousand and twenty-two.
So moved, just presented.
Second. We have a motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Zepity, to approve the execution of the cost-sharing agreement between the city of Crest Hill and the Hillcrest Shopping Center LLC by resolution and satisfaction of one of the conditions of ordinance nineteen thirty passed in October of two thousand and twenty-two for the water main location, relocation. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kuba?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rushe?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Guzal?
Yes.
Mark Zepity?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And the last item is for a motion to approve the execution of an agreement between, agreement based on the approved ordinance nineteen twenty-seventh and the requirements to include the legal description and easements for two locations and the wording added by the city attorney for Minar's and future locations. So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Dyke, for the approval of the execution of the BRT outdoor LLC agreement based on the approved ordinance nineteen twenty-seven and the requirements to include the legal description and easements for two locations and the wording added by the city attorney for the Minar's and future locations. Questions or comments? Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joel Kubel?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rushe?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Guzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Marcus Zepity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And that is all I have tonight, Mayor.
Okay, any questions of city engineer?
I have a question. I know you're handling part of the, of the, uh, construction on, uh, for gas and wash on, uh, Webber Road and Division. Is there any way we can put another update on Facebook or on website and get a lot of messages and?
Yes, we can, I will work with the building department.
Just something of what's coming up, you don't have to give that much detail, just?
I'll, I'll work with the building department on that, um, we're getting ready to issue permits for that for the next step. Right now, they're just kind of doing insulation, some roach control items. That's all they should be doing. I saw something's delivered today that we're talking to them about, but yes, I will work with them to get something on the website.
And there's a lot of movement going on today.
Yes, yes, there is, they're, they're eager to get started, but we got some things we have to pass or get approved first. But I will, I'll take care of that.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, thanks, Ron. Uh, community development, Maura will be here tomorrow. Uh, police department, police chief Ed Clark, good evening, Ed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I don't have any items on the agenda this evening. I just want to make council aware that again, May 19th, uh, 2023 will be our cap on the rooftop over our local Dunkin' Donuts, it'll be from 5:00 AM till noon. So stop on in and, uh, when you get your coffee and, uh, you donate to Special Olympics, that would be greatly appreciated.
What day of the week is that?
That is a Friday, I believe, yes.
It's always on a Friday.
Uh, the other thing was we, I just found out we were awarded the Gold Award for Excellence in Policy Management by Lexapro. So I'm very proud of that, uh, it's basically criteria based on your policy manual and your management of that, so. I'm very proud of the people that maintain and, and keep that up to date and keep on the officers for training and everything, so. Very thankful for them and just very happy to be awarded that.
Good job.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any questions of police department? All right, thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to the mayor's report, uh, we have three reappointments this evening. All these terms expire on April 30th of 2023. The first one that is before you is for the Civil Service Commission for the reappointment of Mr. Nick Weiss. Nick has served, uh, on the Civil Service, uh, Commission for the past five years and he is willing to, uh, agree to another three-year term which would expire on May 1st of 2026. I ask for your, uh, concurrence.
So move, Mayor.
Second, we have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the reappointment of Mr. Nick Weiss. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Claudia Guzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Marcus Zepity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joel Kubel?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rushe?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
I have before you, uh, two reappointments to the Plan Commission. The first is Mr. Jan Platow. Jan was appointed, uh, and has served for the last seven years on the Plan Commission. Uh, he has also agreed to, uh, um, be re-appointed for another three years which would expire on May 1st, 2026. I ask for your concurrence.
So move is presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Albert to reappoint Jan Platow to the Crest Hill Plant Commission for a three-year term. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Marcus Zepity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joel Kubel?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
John Rushe? Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Guzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
And the last one to the Plan Commission is Mr. Angelo DiSario, who has served for the past three years on the Plan Commission and Angelo has agreed to serve in a second three-year term which will expire on May 1st, 2026. Also, I ask for your concurrence.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Giselle to the reappointment of Mr. Angelo DiSario to the Crest Hill Plant Commission for a three-year term. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
John Rushe?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Guzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Marcus Zepity?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joel Kubel?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, there's one vacancy on the, um, Police Pension Board. I want to certainly thank Marco Cola di Pietro for serving on that, uh, board for the past two years, but he has chosen not to be reappointed. I do have somebody that will be before you at next Monday night's meeting, um, for consideration. And also, as I stated about, uh, uh, two months ago, if anybody would like to be have, under consideration, to be appointed to any of the boards that are made through the mayor's office, please, uh, contact my secretary, Mayor Valdejaro, or you can go online and you can certainly get any of the applications that you, uh, would like, are considering and have interest in. We already have taken care of the proclamation for the motorcycle awareness. We have before you tonight, also, we have a proclamation for Arbor Day. And I know that our Public Works Director, Mark Seeter, and our assistant, Blaine Klein, are working on getting the City of Crest Hill as a tree city. So this is one of the requirements for that possibility. So I would ask for the reading of the proclamation. We'll begin, begin with Alderman Dyke.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation, whereas in 1872, Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees and whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and?
Whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the world, throughout the nation and the world and?
Whereas trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, monitoring the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen and providing habitat for wildlife and?
Whereas trees are renewable resource, giving us paper wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products and? Whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community and?
Whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source, source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, Raymond R. Solomon, Mayor of the City of Crest Hill in the great state of Illinois, do hereby proclaim the month of May this year, 2023, as Arbor Day. In the City of Crest Hill and urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands and to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. In witness whereof, I have errant to set my hand and cause the great seal of the City of Crest Hill to be affixed the 17th day of April in the year 2023, Raymond R. Solomon, Mayor.
So move is presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Giselle for the approval of the Arbor Day proclamation. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joel Kubel?
Yes.
John Rushe?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Guzal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Marcus Zepity?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, the only other thing I have is an announcement about Memorial Day, which will be held on Monday, May 29th at 2:00 PM. We will be at our new City Hall, which is located on City Center Boulevard next to the Menards and behind the White Oak Library. We have the honor and privilege this year of having the Assistant Director of the Illinois Department of Veterans Assistance and Services, uh, Mr. Anthony Vaughn, as our guest speaker. So he will have, um, a lot of information in regards to services that are offered to our veterans in the City of Crest Hill. We will also have with us Mr. Anthony Hernandez, who represents Will County, who has an office in Lockport Township. He takes care of a lot of the issues and, uh, challenges that our veterans have in Will County. So we will have musical entertainment that will start 20 minutes before the program by the Frankfurt Brass Band. We will be doing a rededication of our new site with the stones and the, uh, brand new Vietnam Veteran Stone that was purchased all through volunteer donations. There will be refreshments after the, the, uh, uh, program. So we ask that everybody please join us on that day. Again, it's May 29th, Monday at 2:00 PM. It is a solemn, non-political day that we will certainly remember all of our past veterans and police officers who have passed away. With that, I will be glad to answer any questions. Hearing none, we will move on to our city clerk's report. Our Deputy City Clerk, Karen Berserka, is with us this evening, Karen.
Wait, I'm sorry, I had one question, Mayor. I had a resident contact me, as a matter of fact, it was just tonight, saying that they heard about a local establishment that is going to be, they're advertising for a craft fair that they are going to hold on their premises. And that craft fair would have vendors. Resident wanted to know if they have a permit for that. Would you know?
I wouldn't know, do you?
I don't.
Do we know where this is at?
Um, I'd have to get more information.
As of right now, I don't think I have any, but we have some events out.
But that would be something that would be required.
Yes.
And that would be through the clerk's office.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll turn it over to our Deputy City Clerk, Karen Berserka.
I do not have any items on the agenda.
Okay, any questions of Deputy City Clerk?